I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to remind everybody that this is a public meeting and is being recorded via audio and visual as well. And this is a public meeting. Any words, recognitions, or correspondence?
I don't have any today.
Okay.
I think we'd be permissive if we did not acknowledge the work of our first responders in the last couple of weeks.
Well, absolutely.
Between the events on the mountain and the events at Shearer's Food, I think it would be well to put into record that incredible service that they provided. It's risky work and they did, maybe even I can hear, they did a wonderful job.
Yeah, absolutely.
Endorsement.
Well said. Thank you. Okay, approval minutes from previous meeting from February 2nd, February 9th.
Who'd approve?
Second.
Motion is second. All favors say aye.
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 Motion carries. Any additions to the agenda?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Hearing none. Now is the time for public input and recognition of visitors. If you have anything about you want to discuss with the commissioners that's not on the agenda, now is your time to do so. Okay, hearing none. Number one, Walla Walla Basin Watershed Council presentation.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Troy Baker. I hope you can hear me this morning.
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'm the Executive Director at the Watershed Council and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on projects that the Watershed Council completed in 2021 and that will be working on this year. And so I prepared a slide presentation, and if we can advance the slide. Great. In 2021, the Watershed Council secured over $1.1 million from federal, state, and local funders for the basin projects located on the Oregon side of the Walla Walla Valley in Yumitilla County. Next slide. For the reference, the map on the slide is, shows project locations that the Watershed Council over the years has completed across the valley. Those projects range from irrigation efficiency, fish passage and habitat projects, education and outreach, and then also our managed aquifer recharge program. Next slide. The Watershed Council continues to operate 14 managed aquifer recharge sites, and at the beginning of 2021, we received a new limited license from Oregon Water Rights or Water Resources Department to continue operating those sites through 2025. In 2021, we recharged over 8,000 acre feet into the shallow aquifer in our basin. And with that total from 2021, we've recharged over 92,000 acre feet into the ground since 2004. Next slide. The Watershed Council conducts groundwater monitoring at 60 wells in our basin, and that data is being collected and it helps to determine how effective we've been with the recharge work. And it also helps provide data on groundwater trends across the valley. The hydrograph on the right side of the slide is dedicated, is a dedicated monitoring while located on the east side of the Walla Walla River, just north of Milton Free Water. Over the past seven years, we've recorded a drop of groundwater at a rate of two feet a year. In 2021, we began operating a new recharge site in the vicinity of that well, and we're hoping for positive results. Next slide. We're also conducting surface water monitoring at various small streams and rivers in the basin to help determine the effectiveness not only of our recharge program, but also for restoration and efficiency projects. All of the data that we collect from our service and groundwater monitoring program is available for the public on our website. Next slide. The final component of our monitoring work that we focus on is recording water temperature on the main stem Walla Walla River. Prior to 2020, the trend in water temperatures was much sideways without a noticeable upward or downward trend. Post the 2020 flood event, we're recording significantly higher summertime temperatures, max temperatures, from the upper reaches of the Walla Walla River all the way down to state line. Now, the higher water temperatures could be due to the damage that the riparian zones experienced due to the extreme flows of the flood. The photo on the slide was taken at Harris Park and shows, above Harris Park, and it shows just how exposed the river is now post-flood. Next slide. In 2021, the Watershed Council completed a Cows Creek assessment. Cows Creek is a tributary of the Walla Walla River and provides suitable habitat for ESA-listed steelhead. We identified through that assessment multiple areas that are in need of addressing. And in 2021, we started addressing some of those issues. Next slide. A project identified early in the assessment was a barrier right at the mouth of Cows Creek. It was a concrete structure that was really impeding fish passage during the lower flows of the year. So we started working on that project in 2019 and completed the project in 2021. And the image on the left was taken during the project construction, and the image on the right was taken at the same location in last year when we completed the final riparian plantings that we've, we conducted at the site. Next slide. So a second project identified from the assessment was a fish passage barrier on Cows Creek, just above Blue Mountain Station Road. We completed all the design work last year in 2021 and secured funding to construct the project this year. When completed, this project will open up 10 miles of critical habitat. And so the barrier is the photo on the left, and then the habitat above that is, in the upper part of Cows Creek is on the right. And that should be completed this October. Next slide. And finally, we started on a third project on Cows Creek up at River Mile 4. And the focus of this project is to begin to slow down water moving through the project area with the intention of keeping water in the system longer through the hotter months of the year, while also providing critical complexity in fish habitat. Next slide. So along with the work completed on Cows Creek and what we're currently working on on Cows Creek, in 2021, we finished a habitat assessment that was focused on the main stem Walla Walla River and its north and south forks. This project provide, provides us valuable data as to the conditions of the system post-2021 flood. So this is, all of this work was completed after the February 2020 floods. Next slide. So from that data that we collected from the assessment, we started working on a four-mile stretch of the North Fork Walla Walla River. And this is all area that's at the end of the county road. And there's multiple landowners that we're working with up in that area. The lower photo on the left depicts the conditions prior to the flood, and the photo on the upper left is in the same location post-flood. And you can see that the amount of grazing land and riparian areas that was just destroyed by the flood event. Next slide. So our project goal is to address the lack of habitat complexity within the project reach, while also protecting the valuable infrastructure from the multiple landowners that are partnering with us on this project. Next slide. So the way in which we evaluate the project's success, this large restoration project's success, is through effectiveness monitoring. And so we've, we developed a monitoring program which is being funded by OWAB and BPA, and we started collecting the pre-project data in 2021, and will continue monitoring the project reach at various points throughout the project's completion in order to evaluate whether or not we were successful. Next slide. So in 2021, the Watershed Council continued to do its work with the local irrigate, local agricultural community through our pesticide stewardship partnership project. Next slide. This project has been very well received locally, and with the support, project has been very successful as well. Through monitoring and cooperation, we've reduced the likelihood of pesticides being found in local streams, rivers, and irrigation districts, and the local grower community is very responsive to the monitoring results. And we've been conducting this project since, since 2005. Next slide. So along with, with completing on-the-ground projects in 2021, the council helped co-lead the Walla Walla River by-state flow study. This was the final year that the council will be in that role as co-leader, but we will continue to provide support, input as, as the project moves forward, under the direction of OWRD, Washington Department of Ecology, and the Confederated Tribes. This planning process is focused on achieving, is focused on achieving in-stream flow targets for fish species in the Walla Walla River. Next slide. So one of the possible outcomes of the flow study is the construction of a Pine Creek reservoir. The Watershed Council secured a grant from OWRD and conducted, conducted a preliminary look into the geology of the location of a possible dam. This project focused on trenching through the soils and drilling a diagonal bore to look at, look for historic faulting activity. And the preliminary findings show no evidence of faulting, but additional work will need to be completed if this site is chosen as a preferred option for the, for the flow study. Next slide. The Watershed Council also participated in 2021 and is currently participating in a basin-wide strategic planning process called the Walla Walla Water 2050 Strategic Plan. This planning effort will guide the basin, focusing on in-stream and out-of-stream uses and future demands over the next 30 years. Next slide. So along with the, the projects previously mentioned, the council completed the design work on two additional fish, fish passage projects, one on the South Fork, Walla Walla River, and the other on the lower, lower reaches of the North Fork. And we plan to move into construction of those projects as soon, as soon as we can secure the funding to do so. Next slide. So at the end of 2021, we, the Watershed Council had an open house here in Milton Free Water, and it was well received. It gave us the opportunity to showcase some of the local projects that the council's working on, and it also provided a chance for, for us to hear the feedback from our community. And it was nice to see, see faces again, face to face. Next slide. In 2021, definitely was a challenging year for outreach and education program with all the school restrictions. But that being said, we, we did interact with local schools through our fish eggs to fry, to salmon trout enhancement program. So we did have one, one program that we were able to work with the schools with. Next slide. But we're hopeful that this year in 2022, we'll be able to have a more prominent presence in our local schools through water quality lessons, field trips, and our annual watershed field day and outdoor school. All right, next slide. And finally, I just, I just would like to point out that our success would not be possible without the support and collaboration from numerous local county, state, and federal agencies and partners. And with that, I thank you for the time, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask away. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
One question, Troy, and I think you were there when I asked it, at the Walla Walla 2052, or 20, whatever. The question is, and I'm a big proponent of the Pine Creek reservoir, but at the same time, we're removing reservoirs, both hydroelectric and water, just strict water usage reservoirs everywhere from Clownl Falls to Badger Canyon, throughout the Northwest. Why would we build an additional reservoir and would it be open to the same kind of efforts to remove right after being built?
I think the focus with the building of the reservoir in Pine Creek or at another location, you know, the, the outcomes of that would offset, I think, you know, having that reservoir and what the restrictions of that would mean for Pine Creek. You know, if we're allowed to increase the amount of water left in-stream in the Walla Walla River to increase the, the ability for fish to migrate freely up and down the Walla Walla River, you know, that, that offsets that, what we're going to be losing, I think, in Pine Creek. Pine Creek also has other, other issues that, that really inhibit fish species to migrate up into the upper reaches of Pine Creek as well. And I think that was taken into account. So, you know, there are a couple of, a couple of points there. It's not yet, you know, the, the preferred alternative, you know, we still have to work through that process. There's a warm springs reservoir site a little bit further down in our system, down off of like Butler, I think it's Butler Road that we're looking at, and then also the possibility of piping water out of the Columbia. So I think those are all points that we're going to have to take a look at a little bit closer. And if we do target the Pine Creek reservoir as, as the preferred option, you know, I think it will be looked at, looked at with a, with a fine tooth come to make sure that it's, it's the right, it's the right call.
Yeah, I agree with you, Troy, and, and the need is there without a doubt. I, I just, I just get real apprehensive when you sit through the discussions, especially in the Clamott Basin, and they, they'll go through the exact same list you just went through of why they shouldn't be removing those reservoir dams. And they're not getting very far. Anyway, thanks, Troy.
You're welcome.
I have no questions. Great presentation. Mr. Murdock, okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and, and presentation.
Very interesting.
Thank you.
Tom Fellows is up, number two, greater purchase.
Good morning, commissioners. Tom Fellows, Public Works Director. So before you is a request for purchase of a, of a new road grader. This grader wouldn't be delivered until next September, maybe even later if they get behind more on their orders. But, so we're trying to be a little proactive and, and get the orders in a little quicker. The purchase price of, of the new grader after the Sourcewell contract is $397,592. And this is budget, we did budget for this for the next year, so.
Thanks, Tom. I would move for authorization to purchase a 672 GT motor grader from Papay Machinery for a price of $397,592.
Second.
Got a motion, a second and further discussion? All fair and motions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I think that's you, also number three.
So the next item before you is our multifide asphalt contract for the, for our chip seal projects this summer. We requested for quotes from the usual vendors plus advertised it on the website. We got three responses to our request. The CRS-2 is the, is the primary product that we're looking at. We did ask for a, a cost for the CRS-2P simply because we have a couple of small projects we might, might want to utilize that material on. So the, the results of the bids were albina asphalt was low bidder for $519 per ton delivered for the CRS-2. Ergon out of Pasco was second at $569 per ton. Idaho asphalt was third at $578 per ton. And we're recommending that the board accept albina asphalt as low bidder and, and issue them the contract for the product.
Even though it is a hefty, hefty increase, I'll move for approval of the contract for gatonic multifide asphalt for 2022 purchases with albina asphalt for $519 a ton.
Got a motion, a second and further discussion? All fair and motions, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And number four, well improvement contract.
So this is at Harris Park, as I'm sure the board is aware, when we had the flood up there a couple of years ago, we, prior to the flood, we had two wells. One of those wells got lost in the flood. We lost the wellhouse, the casing, the whole works. So what we had to do is consolidate into one well. The, the pump and the mechanical portions of that well are over 20 years old. And so it was, and, and now that one well is providing both potable water and the, the irrigation water. So we have had some concerns. It hasn't, hasn't given us any problems yet, but we felt that it would be prudent to go ahead and, and upgrade that well, put a new pump and some new pressure tanks, and, and make sure that we weren't going to get caught in the middle of this camping season with no availability for water and have to, have, have to make other accommodations. So we got three quotes for the pump, pump and materials. And Woodner Electric out of Milton Free Water was the low quote at $18,877.19, and we would recommend going ahead and going with Woodner Electric. And, and they are as well a local contractor there in Milton Free Water, which I think makes it also appealing.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. In that regard, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. All fair and motions, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your time, commissioners.
Thank you. Number five, roofing contract.
Morning, commissioners. Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager, Yumitilla County. Yeah, before you, the roofing proposal for the new maintenance facility. I sent out requests for five companies to bid. Three said, no, not interested, and I expected two bids, but only got one, which is from Palmer for $185,000. So I'd like to move forward with scheduling that. It will not happen till sometime in the summer, which will be out of my next budget. So we shouldn't have any issues this year.
Only, only one really applied, huh?
Yep.
If there's that much of a delay, I never even thought about this when we discussed this earlier, but if there's that much of a delay, would it be worth it to go back out for bid in 60 days?
Like I said, the three companies declined wanting to bid it, and the one, the other one that was going to bid it, I haven't called and asked him why he didn't, but my guess is everybody's too busy and it's so hard to get the materials. So right now Palmer is, is ordering materials for all their projects for this year right now. Otherwise, they won't be available.
Dan and I, Director of Administrative Services, commissioners, too. I, I wouldn't put things off just with the supply chain that there's a lot of things that are getting very hard to get, so we need to get things ordered as soon as possible.
I move for approval.
Okay, you got a motion? Is there a second?
One second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All fair and motions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unopposed? Motion carries. Insulation request for proposals.
Yeah, so this is, I'd like to go out for bid for insulation for the flat roof areas of the new maintenance shop. There's already insulation in the metal building part, ceiling, and in the back half of the shop, but the middle and front half have no insulation.
So how big of an area are you talking about, Mark?
Uh, it's, let me see.
Sorry about that. Didn't mean to hit you with an unexpected one.
Oh, no, you're fine. It's about 3,600 square feet. And we'll, we'll go through the Energy Trust, and we should get roughly six, six to eight thousand back from the Energy Trust.
For, for the, for doing this insulation?
Yeah, for doing this insulation. Right now, they're doing about a buck sixty a square foot.
I noticed that the previous item was over what we are using as our guideline for total expenditures on the maintenance shop. I assume you're tracking that, Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes, I am.
As a matter of fact, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second and further discussion? All fair and motions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And maintenance payable.
So this is for the Stafford Hansel Government Center. This was, worked on, on the chiller back in, I believe, August or, August or September. They were waiting to build because they were able to get the unit back running, but it's still having some issues, and so they were waiting to see if we were going to move forward with anything on that. But due to the pulling back part of my capital budget to use for other HVAC, I didn't have any money to put towards that in, in this budget year, so I'll have to do something for next budget year.
And that was like 100 degrees in Stafford Hansel?
Correct. That was when it was triple digits and we couldn't keep the chiller running. So this is for $16,886.52.
Is that coming out of our funds?
Say that again?
I think he was asking, Commissioner Marder.
I don't think it's ever been addressed.
Yeah. No, that's the answer.
That's not out of the funds that we authorized earlier in the year for?
No, this was a repair of an existing unit, not a replacement.
Any other questions? Okay.
I'd move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All fair and motions, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Number eight, elections payable. Mr. Lynn and I.
Good morning, commissioners. Dan and I, Director of Administrative Services. And before you is a copy of the payable to election systems and software, ESNS, as we call it. It's our licensing and maintenance, yearly maintenance fee for our ballot counting machine. And so it's a budgeted and routine expense that we have yearly just to make sure that we have our counting machine. And it's over $5,000, so it needs board approval.
I, I, Dan, I sent an email and I didn't see reply. I might, might have gone, and it's been a hectic couple of days. I, I, Dan, I sent an email and I didn't see a reply. I might, might have gone, it's been a hectic couple of days.
Well, I, I don't recall.
Is this, is this part of the original agreement? Right? Is this a warranty issue? Is it a maintenance issue? How does this really come down?
Um, I'm not sure exactly what your question is, but in order to have the counting equipment, we have to pay licensing fees on it. And to ensure that we get updates so that any issue, bug issues or requirements by law coming up. So, we may have ranked choice voting coming up here shortly. Things like that, we have to pay these maintenance fees in order to get those updates to the system. And if we don't pay those, then we won't get those. And sometimes you, as you know, with the way life is, if you don't have a certain update, it could cause some issues.
I fully understand. I, I'm trying to decipher the difference between software update or hardware update or maintenance on, on the machine. Is it?
This is for two licenses?
It is, okay.
And warranty and exception.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you look at it, part of it, the three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars is for the maintenance on the machine. And then we have, uh, the election wear software license fee are the other two. Um, one's a firmware, so it's the, I guess, an extra fee for the software, uh, licensing that's on the hardware, which is the one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then the four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars is the licensing fee and maintenance fee too, in a sense. They kind of ball them together a little bit there. For the software, that's on also computers. So we have everything off the grid. It's not on the internet. We have the counting machine and we have a, a computer that we use to print the reports out that then we take and take a new USB thumb drive and take that report and then we load it onto the internet for people to see. So we have to calculate everything, so it's in a human readable, uh, format, easily the, to understand and view it. The machine actually prints out a report. So, thirty-nine hundred maintenance on the machine and fifteen hundred, the firmware maintenance and licensing fees for the machine and then the four, uh, forty-three hundred is the software maintenance and licensing for the PC that's also partly. I hope that.
Question then, Dan. How much or is all of this an annual fee?
So it's, it's almost ten thousand. It's ninety-nine, um, the total price is nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. The, the one thing that is nice about this, most people would pay twice as much because we have two machines, but our other machine is just a backup in case the one fails. So they allow us to, as long as we don't use both machines all the time at the same time, to only have to license one, one machine. But we, we are allowed to update the other machine.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay. We put it on, didn't we?
No.
No.
Oh.
We dislined it.
Okay.
I'll move for approval.
Second? Yeah, motion is second. All fair and motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Can I have a point of privilege?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Dan, the legislature is tinkering with election laws and I'm wondering if at some future meeting you could kind of bring that into perspective for us, what the impact is of that legislation. And, and I think overall, uh, there's questions about, uh, accessibility to the polls and voter. And I think it's different in Oregon, but I'd like to have you bring that into perspective for us at another future meeting.
Yeah, we can, we can go over that. There's a lot of things going fast and furious right now and some things are, are dying, but then some things are moving forward. So, here in the, shortly, I, I can summarize what exactly has happened and transpired for us. And at the federal level too, there's things going on there too that's going to affect us.
I think it'll be timely.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Dan. Number nine, STF grant amendment.
Morning commissioners, uh, Megan Dobchewski, Transit Coordinator. Uh, the Hermiston Senior Centers currently has an agreement with the county, uh, with their STF funds, so the Stateway Transportation Fund, um, to provide seniors, uh, with rides across town and wherever they need to go, doctor's appointments to the senior center itself, um, to the grocery store. They're requesting that their contract with the county be amended to include fuel costs for delivering meals to the senior centers, to the seniors. So, the senior center right now, they do meals on wheels, so they take meals to seniors who maybe don't have meals regularly. And they check on them, do a, a service well check. Um, so they're requesting that those fuel expenses for their Meals on Wheels program be included under the STF agreement. I did speak with our regional representative with ODOT, who said that other counties within the state of Oregon have used STF funds for that exact purpose. So it's not totally uncommon. And yesterday, uh, March first, the STF Advisory Committee met to, um, provide a recommendation to the board on this. And they voted to recommend approval of the senior centers request.
Thanks, Megan. I'd move for approval of the Hermiston Senior Centers contract modification request, which will allow STF reimbursement for senior transportation. And fuel, for senior transportation, and fuel cost for Meals on Wheels, I think.
I'll second. Now I want to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I think we're lucky that, that the Hermiston Senior Centers and Centers are so well operated. They are very, very difficult to keep in action and yet that's a very popular center. Obviously, it's a beautiful new center. But I often know the four dicees and, and how much they've done to, to help provide leadership. But I think there's a point in there that you pointed out that those Meals on Wheels drivers have contact with the people to whom they're delivering the meals and that may be the only contacts that most people get. So I think enthusiastically support it.
Thank you. So we have a motion, a second. All fair and motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. And the next one's you too, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I trust you'll convey to
I will.
Four dicees our strong support.
Absolutely, yes. Uh, this next one is for a consultant contract to develop a county and regional transportation development plan. Uh, the county received some planning grant dollars from Oregon's fifty-three oh four grant program. Um, the, previously, the board had, uh, provided some matching funds within the stiff formula fund for twenty-one to twenty-three. So, um, there's quite a budget there to, uh, get this plan going and developed. Uh, the county sent out a request for proposals and we only received two proposals. One was from Fern Hears. The other was from Kilsin Associates. Uh, a small group of individuals, including myself, Planning Director Bob Walder, uh, represented from the tribe and a representative from the stiff committee, um, scored the proposals and Kilsin Associates, uh, scored slightly higher, mostly because of their knowledge of the area, they developed a local transit plans. And, um, they, they did most recently our Boardman Connector Plan. Um, both were in similar cause, timeframe and product, um, but like I said, Kilsin has just more knowledge. So, staff is requesting that the board, um, award the contract to Kilsin and Associates.
Okay. Any questions?
Do you know how much that contract's for?
I, we have an amount, but, um, Council, did you want to jump in there?
Um, there is an amount in the proposal, but the hope is that we can, because of the budget amount that we have for this, that we might, we have some additional costs to it as well, because we have had a good funds to do more with the plan than we originally thought.
Okay, thank you. I'd move for, uh, move to award the contract for the development of the transportation development plan to Kilsin and Associates.
Second?
A motion is second. Any further discussion? All fair and motion say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Number twelve, fair, fair payable.
Right.
Nope.
Ambulance.
Ambulance.
Did you skip one?
Ambulance.
I did. Number eleven, ambulance service area committee appointments. My apologies.
Masters, this is Tom Robertson, the emergency manager for Umatilla County. And, uh, I appreciate the opportunity and your time this morning to just, uh, look over some housekeeping items in regards to our ambulance service area. Um, basically what we're asking this morning is that we take a look at the, um, appointments which expired to serve on the ambulance service area committee and, uh, reappoint many of the members and, uh, a couple of new members that are backfilling for some folks that have left the area or no longer available. And, um, then we will take and convene the ambulance service area committee and begin the process of, uh, uh, reviewing our ambulance service area plan as well as our franchise contracts, which has all come available this year.
Okay, any questions?
I'd move to adopt order number BCC twenty-two-two dash zero-one-two.
Second? A motion is second. Any further discussion? All fair and motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Now let's do a fair payable, number twelve.
Go back and dance. Yeah. Hey, I did have a question on this one. It is, and, and Doug kind of reached out and I reached out to Angie and I'm not sure if we, if we're clear on this yet. But this is less than five thousand dollars that being brought to the board. And that, that's the same answer I got. So I, I can take care of that. Like, I'll, I'll talk to her. Thanks, Robert. Thanks, Doug. But as long as it's here, I move for approval of the, uh, payment to Simply Catering in the amount of four thousand four hundred and fifty.
Second?
A motion is second. All fair and motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I assume that's appreciation dinner?
Yes.
Yep.
And good food.
Some was well worth it.
Yeah, it was fantastic. Number thirteen, yes, community benefit plan. That's you too, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Um, any, any questions on the, the two, um, items? They still leave them with a, with a balance of funds, but it does take a big hunk out of it. They haven't requested funds in some time. Do have a new board put together. We met last week, um, or actually two weeks ago. Anyway. I move for approval of grants in the adopt, and to adopt order BCC twenty-two-two dash zero-one-four.
Second?
A motion is second. All fair and motion say aye? Aye?
Aye. Just a side note, they, they want to put signs on those two projects also.
Okay. Okay, motion carries. Number fourteen, personnel policy update. Is that you or is Jennifer on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. I'm Jennifer Blake, Human Resources Director. This morning you have in front of you, um, several policies that are mostly housekeeping items, just to review and update them. Um, really no major changes. Um, one of the policies, three point three, uh, is being recommended to be removed and that's, that recommendation comes from City County Insurance Services. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I, just a real quick, Jennifer, I went through this and being a first timer, it, it's all on me, but is, is there a red line copy that has, I mean, just, not that I have any issues, but what is being changed?
I, I did not provide those in, um, and do track changes in Word, but, uh, you know, I'm happy to sit down and discuss this with you. Like I said, there's relatively little changes with, with the exception of maybe the, um, the criminal history and the pre-employment, um, drug testing policy. And that was just to follow along with the law and, and change that to safety sensitive positions only in terms of pre-employment drug testing and criminal histories only after conditional, uh, job offers have been made.
We're going to be seeing more of these throughout the year, is that correct?
Correct.
But yeah, there are very few changes on these other than just updating the year.
I just was, yeah, I, I knew, so I was trying to figure out what, what was done and what wasn't. I'll leave this one up to you, Commissioner Murdock. That's a lot of numbers.
I will move for approval.
Cheating.
Based on my guess, propensity with numbers.
I second.
Yeah, the motion is second. All fair and the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Okay, number fifteen, sale of property.
Uh, this is coming before the board to authorize the sale of property to the Confederator Tribes of the Umatilla Indian Nation. This, uh, piece of property is located up near Given. Um, it's an improved, uh, property. And it was foreclosed on, I believe, back in two thousand seventeen. Um, we've been talking with the tribes since then for them to purchase it. Uh, there are some issues with the title that affected the price and so they are offering twenty-eight thousand for the, the parcel. And that doesn't meet any of the statutory requirements for a month.
Okay, any questions?
I'd move to adopt order number BCC twenty-two-two dash zero-one-five and authorize a chair to sign real estate contract for, of sale.
Second?
A motion is second. All fair and motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number sixteen, COVID regulations update. Is that you again?
I guess. Um, this is basically with the, uh, changes coming from the state as far as lifting the restrictions on masking as well as other items regarding state offices. The board needs to decide how it wants to address the local county policies that were implemented for the COVID pandemic. Uh, this would including wearing a mask for county employees and in county buildings. How you want to have the hours and, um, any restrictions placed on county offices and appointments. And I think we've also implemented some internal ones like extra cleaning, uh, use of, um, water fountains, things like that and temperature taking. And so, uh, with the restrictions being lifted at the state level, it's before the board to discuss and see if you want to make any changes for county operations.
Would a motion signifying return to normal suffice?
Or basically looking at any restrictions with that, if, if that's what you want to do.
So, with that, uh, I just want to make sure that the screening station at the front doors, does that, that doesn't change what we do up there, does it?
That was not implemented really for COVID.
Okay.
I mean, and we'll still have the screening at the, the security screening.
Okay.
And then the other question would be when you want this implemented, because state offices are going to be closed longer than after March twelfth, I believe.
I got the impression from Dan Hill's memo today that they'll go the same as we do.
Okay, the courts will be open?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Cause I had the wire this morning. He sent me back a memo. That's an impression I got from him.
Would you share that with the rest of the board and with Doug?
I think I got it.
I think I got it.
I don't know. I got Dan's reply.
He and I communicated back and forth, four, five times, but the final response was pretty official.
Yeah, I, I don't have a, so if you would mind sending that to me, I have to.
But in, in, in my motion, uh, I would include lifting the restrictions. I would also, uh, approve adopting, uh, any guidelines relative to, um, quarantine and similar subjects implemented by the state.
I wasn't here to start this whole thing, so I don't even know if I get to second this.
Well, I was second then, so.
Well, there are, I'm aware, there are some other things coming down. Not yet. In forty minutes, so.
Yeah, it'll change.
Yeah.
I'll change by one. That sounds at nine-thirty.
What?
What's that at nine-thirty?
Might be nine-thirty.
I think it's nine-thirty.
Very soon. Yeah, that, it relates to quarantine and that kind of thing.
Yep. And I, I, my second is for that, so.
I'm not sure what that was, but I'm voting for it.
All I know is it means I don't wear the face shield or a mask after the twelfth, right?
Shoot, I thought it was after the vote.
That's the case, I'm gonna, okay, so we have a motion in a second. All fair and the motion say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right.
Red Cross proclamation?
Red Cross proclamation?
I, uh, if you guys want me to, I can handle this.
Go for it.
Uh, I don't think we need to, to read it in, but I think that, um, this is Red Cross month. March is Red Cross month. And I can't remember a year that, uh, other than listening during the Vietnam War, um, as a kid and growing up, the Red Cross, uh, request for blood and donations was, it was every day on every corner. And this is starting to remind me of that, not just with the pandemic, but now with the, uh, conflict overseas. And now we are just getting into, e- even here in Umatilla County, some, uh, emergency management situations where a lot of blood was needed. And I, I think it's, uh, really relevant and I think it's, uh, timely that, uh, this, this proclamation by the Umatilla County Commissioners, recognizing Red Cross. recognizing Red Cross this March as Red Cross Month, and I would move for approval of order BCC twenty twenty-two dash zero one one.
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? Well said, Dan. All fair and the motions say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. City Yumitilla Grant Letter.
This is coming before the board at the request of the City of Yumitilla. The board previously approved up two million dollars to fund partially the city's Business Center project. The grant that they're requesting wanted the documentation in a letter of support, and that letter of support is before the board for approval.
And we already did approve this once, right?
Yeah, but yeah, this is the official letter that the grant is being requested for.
Approved that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what this is for.
Motion for approval.
Second.
A motion is second. All fair and the motions say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Compensation Review Committee.
The annual Compensation Review Committee appointments is before the board for approval. There are two returning ones, and Hispanic Board is also being requested to be appointed.
Okay, any questions?
I'll move for approval.
I, I second that with a, a big endorsement of the new addition, too.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All fair and the motions say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Motion carries. With that, Mr. Conis, Mr. Dorr.
I just, the only thing I really want to touch on, and I know it's been watched by, by a lot of people, including Yumitilla County Emergency Management, weather this week is on, on the edge of being a mess, but I don't think it's as critical as it has been in nineteen nine, or two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. But looking back to those days, this is, weather pattern we're in right now is very similar to what led into both of those events. That atmospheric trough, depending on where it ends up and how long it stands over your head, can cause incidents, so we, we cover a lot of ground in Yumitilla County from Mill Creek, Yumitilla, to, to Coal Springs. And we get a lot of different weathers, weather events in different areas of the county. So I just want to make sure that, that everybody stays kind of on their toes and pays attention to what the weather's doing, not just this week, but until we actually get through the middle of April and, and kind of out of that part of the season. And the other, the other part of that on the emergency management side is we are still in a drought situation in Yumitilla County, but the state is drought declaration is inspired. And I think that, let's look at the next two weeks and then bring it back up for discussion at our next staff meeting, because I, I, I think that we, again, depending on what happens in the next couple of weeks, but I think that we, we may be looking to be one of the first in the state to reapply to the state.
It's about to be first in line. Push the word up.
Well, now that we've lifted the regulations, I know that our department heads have grown comfortable with the opportunity to multitask during board meetings, but nonetheless, I, I appreciate seeing them on occasion at a board meeting going forward.
I would agree with that. So it's always good to see our, our factors and personnel.
Well, we don't have very much contact. I appreciate having them here when they can.
Agreed, agreed. Okay, I don't have any comments, so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, for being here.